Thank you, sir. Call the meeting order of Milton Planning Board. We all rise and clap for it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. What we're gonna do tonight, first of all, is have a hearing on the hotel property map 12 lot 15. And I hereby open the hearing. I would appreciate if you have questions that you address into the board, and we'll try to address them to the applicant and try to go through those things. So, Jeff.
Wait, just for rendition, do you want me to stand or can I sit down?
You can sit down and just explain exactly what you are doing.
Okay, so, I'm Jeff Hertel. I represent the Ray Hertel Family Trust. What we're doing is looking to subdivide, I believe the whole size of this lot was 29 acres, into five lots. One lot will be going to one of the abutters and then will be merged with their lot. So it won't be a whole new lot once the law on judgment is done. And that is shown as parcel A. And then, the other four lots range between 5 and 8 acres. We have sent a letter to Janet from our wetland scientist. The lots will support single-family residents on each lot. Pretty minor subdivision with the amount of road front.
So when you say lot, which lot are you?
Yeah, right here, John. This is going to Patrick and Emily. See this right here? Because they're right here. So this is all gonna be one lot. So there won't be two separate lots here. These will be merged together.
So those are the little lots that the prosecutors are gonna take?
Yes.
Okay, and make sure they know they have to merge them and they have to come before the planning board to do that.
Okay, and then we just have the four additional lots.
Is this all one big?
Twenty-nine acres.
Twenty-nine acres, so you're dividing this.
Yep.
Which will go, it's not shown on the map here, but it'll go that way. And these are also?
Yeah, these will be individual lots and this will go with Patrick and Emily.
Is this lot A, B, C, is that buildable?
They're all buildable and Janet has a letter from our wetland scientist.
Now, does the one they put November 21st?
The one that he sent me, the reply on Janet, he said that you had received it?
Yeah.
That letter?
November 21st.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Okay, good.
All right. Does anybody have questions for Mr. Hertel?
These lots going to be accessed from New Durham Road. Can I have a road call now?
No, individual driveways on each lot.
Make sure they state your name.
Yeah, okay. Would you have your name, please?
I'm sorry. Victor Bloom, my wife Carol Bloom. Eighty-five yard lawn on corner east.
Thank you, Janet.
Well, the owner may have had a question.
Yeah.
But it was, she had written it down.
Oh, yeah. One of the abutters, Elizabeth Shaw, could not make it tonight. There's a lot of people can't make it tonight because I guess the school has had?
Concert.
Concert, yeah. So, she has given us a letter that we will read and enter it into the record. And Rob, I'll give you a copy of it. I'll give you the letter. This is dated December 14th to the Milton Planning Board. I am writing to relay my concerns about the subdivision by the Reherl Family Trust map 12 lot 15. I'd like to start by expressing that I do not believe the 28 abutters of this property are properly represented at this meeting and that it's scheduled for the same time as the Milton County event at Milton Elementary School Christmas concert. My concerns are as follows. The impact on town resources at Milton Elementary School. It is my understanding that the recent building that meant moratorium thinking that was in place was due to the capacity of the school. What changes have been made since the moratorium that will now accommodate a potential influx of students from this subdivision? Emergency services. In 2023 to 2028 capital improvement program, the Milton Police Department reports the current level of staffing will be adequate if the population continues to plateau. I am concerned that the population will grow within the development proposed subdivisions in Milton and that the town will not be prepared to resort to growth. Other resources. Will this subdivision impact plowing, snow removal? Will it impact trash? Will it impact trash pickup? Has an impact study been completed to determine the effect of the subdivision on resources? Should the development of housing in town be phased to help accommodate growth? Number two, impact on the environment. After the land on this property was logged, there was an increased amount of water across New Durham Road after storms. Has there been a study done on how the development of this land will affect groundwater? Cleaning this area uprooted wildlife from the natural habitat. We have had chickens for years without any deaths. All of our chickens were killed while this land was being logged. There's an area cleared right up to our property line. Can it be the responsibility of the landowner to replant a buffer of native tree? I would also like to know if the abutters of this property can get a chance to purchase the land before it is posted if lots are sold. I know myself and many other residents in the town of Milton feel strongly about maintaining the rule fail of the town preserving its natural environment. I appreciate your consideration and concerns as you review this proposal. Thank you, Elizabeth Shaw, 62 Butter Mill Link. Enter that into the record. There you go.
First of all, I hope that she realizes that the hotels are not doing the subdivision. They're simply cutting the lot level and selling it. It will be up to the individual lot owners to take care of, maybe screening in the back end of the lot, if I. That's not gonna be up to the hotels.
Okay, other questions, comments?
No? No, actually, are the permits all complete?
I'm sorry, can I?
Are the permits complete for this? Is there anything else?
We're gonna go through a checklist, okay? But the application is complete. The check for mailing out the abutters was received. Has been received. The abutters list were sent out at the appropriate time to all the abutters that were listed. That's the responsibility of the owner of the property.
Actually, John, the letters went out earlier than required by law. And at that point, I don't know who was aware of a cause of bad night. But that's not, you know, that's not the concern. I understand the concern, but this was sent out well in advance and you're waiting till the last minute to contact the planning board. You can't allow a public hearing. You can't do that.
Okay, yes. Kate Preser?
Can anyone ask a question? Just remember the number. So what is the access on the lot, proposal lot 15? What is the town law?
Access?
How much frontage on a public road do we need to have?
They can access a public road, right?
How much frontage on a frontage?
I think it's 200 foot.
And how much frontage do they have on?
Except for that lot's a back lot, John. And you guys allow for 50 feet on a back lot. So that lot qualifies. What's that?
That's okay.
Nope, right here.
That was big, but that's all right.
That's, well, that's 200 foot front. I believe that's what it is. So this is the frontage you got?
Yes.
If any of that zone, any residential, any commercial?
No.
Are abutters going to have first pick on these lots that abut their properties or?
That's up to each individual. There's no, we're not in the position to set who's responsible for getting the property. It's happening between you and the hotel. Remember, these are, this was a large?
Understood. Yep, no, no shade lights, no infrastructure, no side of the park.
Okay. The, these are just, this was a larger lot that's been divided into buildable lots that will be accessed from Durham Road. So it's, all they're doing is dividing them up, selling them individually. Instead of having 35 acres or whatever it was now, it's gonna be a minimum of 5 acres, whatever. Some are larger, some are smaller, and then they will be up for sale for individuals per come, per serve. I guess that's the way it would operate.
I'm happy to speak to abutters before.
And there's no restrictions or guidelines? These have to be single-family, children, elderly?
No, 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 no. The only restrictions are what we've been working kind of with the town with on our other subdivisions. Single-family home will have to be a minimum of 1,200 square feet. A two-story home will be a minimum of 1,600 square feet. No unregistered vehicles on the lots. No trash or drop cap on the lots. And finish the outside of the buildings within one year start date so that everything looks finished. They don't have to finish the inside by getting the shell.
That's Jeff.
Jeff, that's in the deed, right?
Those showings will be in the deeds.
That will be in the deed.
Yep.
That's kind of what they did over on King.
That's exactly what we did.
And they have a right to put the restrictions on the deed if they want.
I think that's the way to move on Adams Way.
Yeah, Adams Way, interesting.
Thank you for answering my questions. I have to run.
All right, I'll call you. Thanks, man. Thank you. Thanks for calling. Yes, ma'am. Yeah, name is?
Carol Bloom.
There you go.
You're too quick.
Just gotta get it in the record.
Okay. Will there be any streetlights ever on New Durham Road?
Me personally, and that's a question to ask the chairman of the board.
Anybody, what does it do?
I would say no.
Yeah, I know it's money.
That's not for us to, that's not for us to decide.
What, John? I didn't hear the question.
The question was, are there gonna be streetlights on New Durham Road? And I said, more than likely, no.
And not due to this subdivision?
No, as a general question.
That would be to come to the board of select committee. But I can tell you, we're not looking to put more lighting out because it's gonna cost more for the, it'll cost more for the town for the lighting. So, and we had to cut back in every area because of the 2% tax count and other things. So, and these, and the lightings that we have remaining were from a number of years ago.
Took a lot out.
Yeah, and that was a number of five or six, maybe more years ago.
Who was that, John?
That was Roxanne.
Roxanne.
Oh, it didn't sound like her.
Okay, well, Kate.
Kate Preser, so can you answer some wetlands questions?
I can try to. I'm not a wetland scientist, but.
Does you have a wetlands report?
Yep, that's all been submitted to Janet and the board.
Do you have it over there?
No.
Would you like a copy? Because we can get it for you.
Are you gonna have it tonight?
Well, we don't have it tonight.
Anyway, because I'm seeing like leister soils and akton soils and I'm only seeing one really well-drained soil. I'm not seeing any locations of potential housing sites on these. How much of these, like on 1510 and 159 and 157 are actual buildable? How much area is the buildable area?
We, if it's over 5 acres, you don't have to show that. And our wetland scientist was out there. He flagged all the wet. He located it all and he submitted a letter to the planning board regarding that.
Because all these leister soils are all high-water table soils. As far as I know, akton is like a class IV soil. The only really good one, the buildable, is Gloucester on a lot.
Robin, you don't have a copy of that?
I was just gonna ask the same question. I got my copy here.
Just wait a minute.
I have this.
Has she got it?
No.
I remember reading that too.
What lots were you talking about?
Oh.
Okay, how long is that report?
It's only a page and a half. I thought I saw something in here, but the class IV she was referring to, but I don't see it.
All right, let's start through the checklist here first and then we'll address Kate's thing in a minute.
Yep.
Okay. Fully executed signed application, yes. Five 11 by 17 copies of prints, we got those?
Yep.
Large copy, we got one large copy here. We have, we require six, I'll accept one. Name and address and a signature on the applicant, yes it is. Name and address, signature, owner of record, yes it is. Name and address of person in front of the plan, yes it is. Name and address of all abutting properties. They're right here.
And that was taken straight from the copy?
Yeah, that's the way you get it. North arrow on the plan.
Take that again?
The north arrow on the plan.
Can you be on your map?
Well, we're looking.
We're looking. I don't see one.
Oh, I don't see any.
But we can certainly get them. We need that.
We do.
Okay, well, no.
Are there extra maps here?
I'm sorry?
Are there extra maps here?
Yes, you can have, you can have.
You want to?
I want to take with me.
Yes, sure.
I think you said on number five on the map.
There you go.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Do we have one on map?
Was it there?
No, it's not on the map.
I have one on the jump. I like having the Lincoln Hydrate soils technical committee 2017 version for field indicators identifying hydrate soils. We went with the State Water Pollution Control Commission. Our goal, they checked this. Everybody on here had done what they were supposed to do and there had been no negative report on it.
On the?
On the soils.
On the soils, okay. Plan and scale is noted, I believe it is. They prepared, that is true. Locust map showing the general location. You gotta do that, Jeff. No. You know what that is, right?
I know exactly what that is. Yeah, these are.
Okay, property boundaries and lines, exclusive distance and angles of plot and scale, yes they are. Areas of pro lots, square feet acres, yes they are. Delineation of all weapons and wetland buffers, yes they are. Okay. A lot of stuff. Definition of slopes.
The soils, right.
I see those. Location of buildings, there's no buildings. Location of all roads or driveways within 200 feet of subject title, there are none. Exit access road doesn't really apply. Barbed wire, stone walls. There are, are there any stone walls on there? I don't see them. Oh, yes, there is one.
Yes, there are.
There is one, yeah. Right down here by lot well.
Yep.
Good. Existing, no. Current zoning classification of the primary location of the?
It's in my truck, I can do that.
Current zoning classification of the property and location of district boundaries that's located in two or more zones. That's not in two or more zones. Location of all buildings except the, no. On-site traffic, closing. All existing control services, that's non-fulfillable. Note defining the purpose of the plan, yes it does. Brief history of the property, including other disturbances. I think we have on the application.
Under the notes.
Under the notes, yep, thank you. General description of existing characteristics, I believe that's in the notes. Summary distribution of drainage upstream on the property, discharge downstream of the property.
I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, thank you. There we are, there we are. That's the, it's on the second page, right? Flood hazard, note of reference, look. Note referencing a delineation on the plan and/or all easements on right-of-way and delineated, I'm sorry, right-of-way and needed property restriction. You've stated that, is that in the application or deed restrictions?
No, typically, we just put them in the deed. But we can add it to the plan if you guys want.
Yeah, add it to the plan.
Do you have the restrictions?
Yeah. State of New Hampshire alteration of all previous training, not needed. All parcels will be numbered, are we good on the numbering now?
Yes, I was gonna say, the agenda is actually incorrect. It's lot 15.
Okay, that's me. So, okay, that's good.
Yep, no, just a second.
What final determination on it?
That the plan that Jeff has here is the correct one.
Plan we have in our hands is the correct plan.
Okay, is it supposed to be lot 15 or 15-1?
It's 15.
15.
Okay, because the map referring to it is 15-1.
Where are you looking, Janet?
Where are you looking, Janet? You're looking at the old one. Janet's looking at the old map.
Look at the right-hand area under notes and look at number one. Purpose of this plan to show a subdivision of Milton County.
Oh, yeah.
Lot 15-1.
Okay, that needs to be changed. Up and right under notes, item one.
Oh, lot 15.
Lot 15, yeah. Okay, thank you, Janet. Planning Board approval of lots, space for chairs and signatures. Well, there isn't, but we'll sign it anyway if we get to that part. Okay. Seal of the duly registered, right there, yes.
Yep.
Any approved waivers? There's no waivers required. Okay. There we go on that one. Are there any other questions? Kate, we can get you a copy of that report if you'd like.
It's also, that information is also on the map too. It's down after a reference plan. It says the wetland delineation was completed according to the following standards. And all that information that I already read is like there on the map.
Okay, we'll still get you the.
Sorry.
Okay.
The question is, is what exactly is the buildable area on these lots? And I guess you said that according to state law, you don't have to survive more than 5 acres?
No, because you have to, it has been determined that you can build on these lots. That's what the wetland scientist does. But we don't have to park it or show a building envelope because it's over 5 acres.
They don't get parked?
No, because they can see that there's land out there that will park and that they can build on. Because the lots are bigger than 5 acres. There's so much area out there on these lots.
These homes could be located?
Anywhere they can build.
Those are further away from the road.
Entirely up to the buyer.
Up to them.
And the soils in?
To 50 requirement with subject in a lot.
75 feet, 75.
Okay.
But I'm also looking at the maps, John.
Yeah.
And I'm seeing that like 15-9, according to this little small map here, like, I'm not gonna judge. And that's why I wish we had that information ahead of us, in front of us, that what percentage of that, if that's, if that blue area is all wetlands, what percentage is that of that entire 8-acre lot? You know, ostensibly, you're right, there should be some buildable land there, but.
Unfortunately, the ordinance does not require us to determine, does not have a minimum building envelope for Milton. So as long as the lot's qualified to build somewhere on, my understanding of the ordinance, that's it.
So, what? I'm just asking the questions.
It's okay. It's okay, you asked all the questions.
I don't have to like the answers.
No, I know, I don't know. That's okay. Any other questions, comments? Any other questions?
Did you have a question?
You have a question?
You have a question, Jasmine.
Yeah.
That's what we're here for.
So as far as, as far as the subject goes, what is it?
We'll get you trained by the end of it.
Maybe. What is for the raised beds titled 15-5 or whatever?
That's Massachusetts. New Hampshire doesn't have Title V. Basically, the well there, they'll be test pits, they'll park it and they'll determine where the level of the leach field needs to be at that point. You have to be 100 feet from wetlands and 75 feet from the well. State regulations, state law. But the elevation, Victor, will depend on the actual pit that they dig, where it's gonna go. Yeah, and what kind of system they do with it. They do a chambered system, that's concrete chambers you can drive on. You don't have to be so far in the ground with that. You know, viros are different. You know, you need more clearance for viros.
I'm curious, Carol, and I'm curious. Do you have a base price for residential housing here? Do you have any idea?
No, because we're just selling the lots, Carol, so whatever the people want to build there is up to them.
Within the restriction of the deed. It's like, it's like, you mean, but like where I live on Hampshire Shores, they have quite a few deed restrictions on what you can put on there, what size the dwelling is supposed to be. Now, they're old, but the deeds are, those give you the restrictions on them.
The grants there. Kate Preser, you're saying that there's deed restrictions on this property?
There will be on the individual lots.
Individual lots.
Why is that?
To protect, to protect the value of people's houses around it.
So they're certain-sized house.
Tiny houses are not allowed.
Tiny houses are not allowed.
And if it's a mobile, it has to be a brand new mobile. No 70-year-old mobiles dropped in on the wall.
Manufactured house?
Yep, allowed, just not, it has to be a newer model, not an older model.
Thank you for calling.
All right, Kate, does it have to be a concrete?
What did you say?
No, not yet.
Let the record show. Manufactured house.
Talking about manufactured houses allowed on the property. And yes, they are, as long as they are.
They are new.
A new, what's new? That being spelled out.
Brand new.
Brand new, never been new.
So this land is not encumbered with the tax restrictions before?
Correct.
Thank you for clearing that up for me.
Feel better about that, Kate?
Feel better about that.
Okay, if there are no further questions, none? All right, I hereby close the hearing on the hotel property lot.
Well, hold on a minute before you do that. Are there things that he has to do?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
I would like that he said a do before you close the meeting.
He has to do what?
Tell him the things that he has to do.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Finish or complete.
We want a north arrow on the plan. We want a locust map on the plan.
Yep. Yep.
Yep.
We need, what else?
Restrictions out of the plan.
Yeah, number twenty-six, a note of referencing the delineations on the plan and all easements right-of-way or deed property restriction.
And it wasn't the note piece that said fifteen is fifteen?
We have to change fifteen.
Yeah, we have to change the note, note one to read lot fifteen, not fifteen-one.
Yep.
Right.
Okay.
And I think that's added?
That's it.
The left, so it's separate?
Yes. So, with that being read into the record, any further questions? Okay, I hear by close the hearing at seven oh one.
I wanna thank the young man.
Very well, he is, he's a very good boy.
He has been.
He's super.
Janet, my grandson is here.
Huh?
My grandson is here.
Yeah?
Yes.
Yeah?
That's the baby.
Well, he's like eighteen months, so.
He's a young man now. Okay.
I wish I would've been there, but I'm finding something, and I have to be careful because the pressure jacket stopped working, and they just bought the new ones today.
Oh, boy.
I don't wanna.
Yeah, I hear ya.
It's personal, I am, I wanna be able to work there first, staying away from everything that I possibly stay away from.
Sure. Okay, what's next, Janet, can we discuss it?
You can go into the, you can go back to the rest of the meeting.
Yeah?
And you can give them a, um...
A conditional approval?
Conditional approvals.
A conditional approval?
Yeah.
A what?
A conditional approval.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, a conditional approval, so it brings back the changes that have to be made, and then we'll give them the weather.
Yeah. Okay, any discussion?
No. So, so I guess the only question I would have is, how quick of a turnaround would we expect to see that now?
The plans, the.
The corrections that you need to.
I'm hoping next week.
Okay, yeah, just as long as we don't drive, I think that's fine.
Yeah, I'm hoping, I'll get into my surveyors office in the morning, all the notes.
Okay, so.
And next week I should not go and I can flip by Janet.
Go ahead.
Yeah?
Yeah.
So, we send you for January's meeting, you should have everything done?
Yep.
Okay, we'll work it out, we will send you for January's meeting.
Okay.
And that's into the whole approval.
Good, very good, okay. Do I have a motion here?
I'll make the motion, we accept the conditional, the application with the conditional approval that we've got.
The item as described, you can do it.
I second it.
Okay.
Now, the public can continue to ask questions the next meeting, can they not?
Sure.
They're always invited.
Always invited and always.
Not just the bottoms of this property, but public's welcome, I know it's a busy season.
Yep.
Always busy.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor?
John, yep, yep.
All in favor?
Uh, wait, do you have a second?
Yeah, George, John Quinn.
John Quinn.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, we did, we voted, did you vote? Okay, good answer. Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Merry Christmas, everybody. I'm gonna leave these for you guys.
Okay.
I want my sad Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, Janet, thank you, John, thank you all, thank you. Nice, good to see you.
All right, stop knocking stuff on the floor.
That's the game. Yes, oh, that's the game. Fetch.
How many times? Well, it won't be a game for very long.
Oh, yes, that's what they are like.
He'll go to the floor, I'll put him on the floor.
But I never saw.
You talked, she put the pickle in there, now he's.
Yeah, yeah.
Tom's trying to go back the whole time, I'm straightening my eyes a little bit.
Okay.
I have to act of mine, whatever.
That was Kate, she's got two pairs of glasses.
Where's your reading by this now?
This is just.
I got my glasses, I'm gonna play some.
Okay, all right, hang on, Janet.
Hi, Carol, nice to see you. Thank you.
Good, guys.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna continue with our meeting.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, got the letter.
Okay. Okay, on the, on the solar, pro-solar ordinance.
Yep.
I'll put them in there. Very good. All right, has everybody read the minutes?
Yes.
Any additions?
The public need close at seven oh one.
Oh, okay.
So now we're into the regular.
We're into the regular, yeah.
Seven oh one. But I said, I didn't say hour, did I say hour? I said.
Maybe half hour.
See you, John.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Do I have a motion on the minutes?
I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes. What date is our? November ninth?
I have a question to you.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Who, wait a minute, who seconded?
I'll second it.
Okay, well, correction, go ahead.
Thank you, John.
No problem.
Page two.
Wait a minute, page two, yep.
What says J Hotel?
The lead?
Um, J Hotel, no, J Hotel says he is there to be quizzed for women over your pool. It's a paragraph, third line up, where it says we'll be doing a lot line adjustment, that's for the cost per, or to, or purchasing a piece of that property.
Yep.
It's not a lot line adjustment, it's a merger.
Oh, right.
Whatever he's, whatever he said stays in the minutes, though.
Is that what he said?
That's what he said.
I'm correcting him.
Oh, you did?
Yeah. Down down on J, with John Quinn, because the home is in the Lake District, the five-acre lot minimum does not apply. It's not in the Lake District.
Okay, now, wait a minute.
Wait a minute, we're moving to a different section.
We're moving too fast here, so let's go to where it says there's a lot line adjustment, and you told them it was a.
Merger.
Have to give merger.
Merger, okay, we didn't do a merger, Kate.
No.
I'm anticipating your question. Okay, that's fine, okay, so do you see where that is?
No.
Okay, let me know when you get it.
Page two.
Page two.
Page two, about, on the first paragraph, probably fifth line down.
First line.
We'll be doing a lot line adjustment to be a merger.
We wanna change that to merge.
Merge.
Okay.
Okay, then, where are you going next?
Um, third one from the bar, John Quinn.
Yep, oh, yeah.
He said because the home is in the Lake District, the five-acre lot minimum doesn't apply, the home is not, that land is not in the Lake District.
It should say because the home is not in the Lake District.
Right. Was he corrected?
You're good, Janet, you're good.
I was anticipating flooding.
I'm reading the minutes, I didn't hear what you said.
Um, I might have just missed that.
I might have misspoken.
Maybe.
Um...
We'll delete that, I'll bet.
Side.
Just delete the home way.
On page three.
Okay.
Um, down one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, where J K R, thirteen, says no dry plays on access road will be allowed. I discovered tonight that there is a waiver form, I'm in that one, that holds a town out with any problems of that area.
Yeah, we don't have to change anything on this, or we.
No, that's just, this is just an FYI.
Oh, so it's.
I think we, we, we didn't have a waiver form, we issued a letter.
Yes, I think that, yes.
Yeah, when.
Because I think I have a copy of the word.
Yeah, when we did, when I did some, were the upons, wherever it was, we issued a letter, not a form, we issued a letter. Okay, thank you for that.
Yes, the form, and I found that tonight.
Print, print that off, Janet, and then scan it in and then send it to us.
So, it's just those two updates?
Yep. It's just those two updates?
No, I made them, and evidently Robert didn't catch the recording. The next went down, but I said, where I say, um, the first, it should be the first seven hundred and twenty-five feet of access road marks to Wakefield, and she said twenty-five feet.
Okay, seven twenty-five.
What page?
Yeah.
It's right, it's page three. Page three, about two-thirds of the way down, after Roxanne talks about private roads, Janet talks about, says the first seven hundred and twenty-five feet should be seven twenty-five. All right, next.
That's it?
Oh, good. All right, all in favor?
All right.
All right, okay, minutes are passed, okay.
As amended, good.
Yeah, as amended, thank you, very good. Okay, now, into the solar ordinance, and Janet, if we run too long here, we'll stop.
Oh, wait a minute, did we vote?
Yeah, we did.
Okay.
You voted, I.
Oh, okay.
I heard you.
Well, no, I know, but she, then she said, hey, we got some exceptions, so I just wanted to show we're good.
No, 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 yeah, well, we, exception, exception, and then we, yeah, okay. So, so what I told the members here, that if we get too long, we can stop and pick up, we have to have this posted on, you were right, January eleventh.
Has to be posted.
Posted, the hearing has to be posted.
Okay.
And the hearing has to be January twenty-second.
Okay, that's what I.
So, if we don't get through this, and we very well could, we could postpone further review and set up another meeting to finalize this thing, but I think we can go through this pretty quick, and I did print off your comments someplace.
Pretty much, I agreed with a lot of the study, Ben.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, here we go. Got it, got it, okay. So, let's, we'll start through this here, now, what I gave you is, this first one here is what I sent to the attorney, okay?
Okay.
And then, what she did is took that document and she put all her comments on there. So, on the first page, okay? Need water?
Do you have that?
Oh, we got it.
The one right here, Christine will mind sharing.
Okay, um... On page one, she is, and I understand, she's deleted, what did she?
Oh, she deleted like the town of Milton.
Yeah, she deleted that.
It was an errant period.
She deleted all references.
You're all right?
You okay? You okay?
Me?
Okay, so, deleted, oh, she just did some, the first delete, the grammatical delete.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, then she deleted, she deleted, in the whole document, she deleted any references to the towns that we noted, so we did that, okay. Then it talks down, then it talks about residential, and it says, uh, commented, does this refer only to accessory residence, accessory residential solar? Uh, it seems from the tape, from the table below, that it should include accessory agriculture as well. She put that in there, I would say, leave it in there.
Yep.
Okay, and then she corrected the grammatical break, because she put down here, planning board approval will require approval of planning partner buildings, so. Then it, then she refers, we're talking about commercial, this is B. Uh, does this refer to all other seven categories of solar community, primary agriculture, da-da-da-da-da, industrial utility, solar power generation, or is it just commercial and large commercial? It's confusing, we have these provisions here because they're not clear how this works with the rest of the ordinance. So, what it says is, any person seeking construction, or this is commercial, any person seeking to construct or carry out any commercial solar system. Is she saying that we had to spell all that out?
Well, right, she's saying, wants to know what we consider commercial, so.
So, we're gonna have to put in that definition, right?
Right, so you could put commercial over here, under the solar definitions, and saying that it, what the commercial means, because we don't have any, we don't have one for commercial.
Don't we have a, don't we have a definition of commercial?
Well, we have general definitions, but we don't have one for commercial.
Okay, so, what we're gonna do is make a definition for what commercial is, right?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, and we put that on page two, under definition, that's agreeable?
Yes.
And just that, it's defined as, whatever it says, primary agricultural, da-da-da-da-da.
Should we also, should we also define residential, just, the third is later in the document, she's asking if community solar, solar is non-residential, she's, I mean, let's make it clear what we're talking about when we say residential.
So, residential, and you're saying non-residential?
No, it's commercial.
If we define residential and commercial, the two areas we're dealing with, then it's clear that what we're actually talking about.
Right, right, so we don't even have, we don't have non-residential, general, or.
Yeah, we don't have, we don't have any of those on that.
So, we should put a definition of residential.
Yeah.
Okay, so, and residential. And I guess we should take that definition from the current ordinance.
Yep, we could.
Okay. Or you could put residential as described in article ba-ba-ba-ba-ba.
Okay.
If we do that, then we, then it is changed, we don't have to change all the ordinance.
Correct, yes, let's do that, as described in.
Article seven, whatever, article twelve, definition.
Yes, that's good, I like that, John, because then you don't have to.
Then we don't have to go back and change.
Right, same with like maybe commercial with this.
Right, so, okay, page two, a lot of stuff here.
Yep. It's a lot of grammatical.
Grammatical stuff, which I agree with, now, she's talking about a, she put down here, there must be, there must come to the, the applicant, they must come to the planning board for a cup that shows they have met the conditions as well as a, as well as other conditions, and what she's saying is, with the cup, we probably should spell that out.
Yeah, definition.
Well, we should spell it out.
Oh, right, well, right.
Which is a conditional use permit.
Yeah.
Oh, no, she deleted conditional use permit, put cup.
Well.
I like it spelled out.
I do, too, because.
Then there's no question of what a cup is.
Right.
It'd be a cup of coffee.
Right, I was gonna say.
And we got cups, thank you for the cups.
Oh, you're welcome.
Those are nice cups.
Those are nice, that was a nice cup.
Very nice, by the way.
We get a Robert her cup.
Yeah.
You get a cup.
You got a tall cup, you got a tall cup or a short cup?
Yeah, I gotta get Scott's cup, but yes, you, you're the.
So, we're gonna, we're gonna spell it out, right?
You are good, well, I'll get your cup.
Yeah, I agree with that one, okay.
Christopher's.
And what she says here is, my assess, my suggestion additions at, at the end of this sentence are to provide some kind of standard for the planning board to use in designing conditions, without something more than what the planning board thinks. It is, is necessary, is necessary as a guide, the provision is vulnerable to legal challenge. Courts will require standards for boards to, to, can't avoid arbitrary discussion. So, what she put in is, the planning board may feel necessary to be, to be in the best interest of the town and budding residents in light of the purpose of this ordinance and the purpose of zoning this, which is proper, which the property of the locator. And she also says that. And she also says that, up on the top there, conditions listed above as well as any other condition, such as protecting the view shed of neighbors and passersby's, which the planning board may feel necessary to be the best, she goes on.
Yeah, yeah, I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with that. And we'll leave that in there. Okay, definitions, this is where Janet says she disagrees with the recommendation. These, these, uh, five definitions we have down here?
Yeah.
Uh, she's recommending that they, they're not referred to any other part in the, uh, in the ordinance.
Oh, like solar access is not mentioned?
Yeah, she doesn't feel they should be in there. Janet, you do, right?
Yes.
I'm fine with leaving them in there. Is there a reason, sorry, I guess my question is, is there a reason why we take them out, I mean, because they're not listed?
No.
Okay, no, I'm just saying.
I don't see any...
Look, it, you look at all the definition pages in the ordinance book. It lists definitions that still necessarily get referred to anywhere else. Problem is, if we don't put these definitions in there now, if somebody comes, well, look, it's already had, a company come to us and start talking about net metering. If we don't have something in there now, even though we don't need it, and it comes down the line later, it's gonna be too late.
Yeah, I, I'm fine with keeping them in.
Well, I think what she, yeah, I, I think what she's trying to say is that, uh, solar access, for example,
Yeah.
where is that defined as a, uh, a regulation in the ordinance? Where, where is that? These are definitions, and they're not defined anywhere as to an action taken, uh, for a solar access.
Right, but I have to get into definition, John. We can always add to the ordinance.
Add to the action.
Yeah, at some point, yeah.
Okay.
Plus, if someone doesn't know...
But you can better have it here in order to be able to use it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that.
All right, we're gonna leave them in there.
Yeah.
Okay. Got our, on page three, she did some grammatical stuff, she took the town, uh, town on there. Note one for more explanation.
Yes, so...
And I, with her, you were told of them and have that nameplate and land coverage. Um, you, you refer to notes, there are no notes.
Uh...
In the, in the, um, um...
Wait a minute, nameplate...
Was the note gonna be at the beginning?
See note one for explanation.
Yes, me, where, where is note one?
I don't know where it's duly noted, but it's noted sometimes.
In the appendix.
In the appendix.
Didn't we have that removed?
Right, where?
Well, we're working on that.
We're work, we're looking. Uh...
This appendix includes images information, so...
It's good, it's still Joe Joe.
So all we have on here is just, this is what we have for the appendix, John, it's just that's...
Oh, yeah.
Right.
So, rated nameplate, does that, does that, does that make any definition here?
Where did you, um, get that information from that says, um, refer to appendix one, or whatever it is? What town did that come from?
Uh, that came from Calhoun.
And you gotta go back and find out what their notes were.
Okay, I'll look that up. If it's not there, I'll pick it up.
Okay. They take the land coverage.
And, oh, solar land cover? Oh, yeah, okay, so this, they're all, these are all from Calhoun.
Right, and you didn't solo, which is on page five, I'm jumping.
No, that's okay, that's, that's fine.
That's all the same thing, it's an appendix issue.
Okay, I'll correct that. Uh, we can skip to page five, because there's nothing in between there.
Nope.
Uh, page five, you just got community solar, what is it, the communities solar? Oh, yeah. A non-residential land use? She's, what is, the question, Mike, what does that mean? I don't know.
Well, well, look at, um, maintenance supply.
Yeah.
That's not, that's not residential over there, that's non-residential land use. That would, that would turn into like commercial or industrial, something other than residential.
Okay, so, non-residential, that would be under definitions.
Yeah.
Okay. That would be, uh... That would be under definitions for the whole order. Non-residential, okay. Okay, so, we continue on here, page five, that's all we got, the rest of the stuff is... Uh, down there, it talks about, uh, on commercial solar, is this intended to reduce onsite consumption? Or for the sale to the grid? And this is commercial solar. What is, there is a definition for...
It wasn't in the notes that I was reading.
No, it's, it's, uh, it's, she has it highlighted in red.
Oh, she never just get anything highlighted in red. I just thought her yellow box.
Yeah, uh, is this intended to reduce the onsite consumption? No, this is, this is just a limit. It's not intended to reduce, it's to limit.
We can always make a note, if it's more than that, it would be considered industrial or some other, you know, specify what's the larger category.
She's referring to, so, if more, uh, than, unless, if it's more, then it would be considered a large commercial?
Yeah.
Large commercial, which is the next one, well, it defines it.
And there we go.
It defines it in, what a large commercial, it says here, I don't know what she's saying.
Well, then why don't we take, make it a small commercial solar, a large commercial? That way we're delineating, it's not just one, it's one or the other.
We'll call it small commercial, we'll leave that out, and then large commercial solar, we'll leave that, the way that is.
It could be a big business under a small commercial, because it's just wattage and land coverage.
That's what this one down here is trying to do, he's trying to do five megawatts, right? I think that's what he's trying to do. Okay, page six, okay, page seven, a lot of stuff going on here. Uh, down at F, she's making the following recommendation. If this applies to all systems, even the ones that don't require a cup or a site plan, it makes more sense to include it here so it can, so it is clear that every system has to comply. So she put that wording in there, solar collection systems shall be considered structures, uh, require building permits to comply with the building setback requirements for lot lines for retired equipment, including panels, tracking systems shall measure setbacks at the point at time where the array is closest to the lot line. Note, portion of the system may cross into the setback. I agree with that.
Yes, I think that's good.
Fine.
And then additional provisions regarding solar collection systems. Why are these two provisions not part of the preceding section? It's unclear why they are separate, separated out. Building height...
You know?
Is she, what she's saying is...
She's saying that A and B under additional provisions can be actually G and H under the prior...
My answer is, is, because, to what the ordinance we have before, can someone with a survey, that you'd end up into an argument with, with the applicant.
Yeah, so...
If you have it spelled out, I disagree with her. No, no, there's no, there's no gray area in there, black and white.
Well, this, this, this here shouldn't be under additional provision. This should be G.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, they should be in there.
Yeah, it should be in there, absolutely. I agree. So that will be G, uh, and then G, H would be lot coverage.
Right.
Right?
Yeah, and we would just get rid of that additional provisions.
Yep, correct.
Okay, yep, that sounds good.
Unless we have something that's actually an additional provision.
Which, why would you, you know, why would you just...
I don't know, I'm just saying, it's redundant.
Yes, it is.
And that was taken from, uh, the solar energy, New Inter Solar Energy, which they are revised, they're trying to revise that, you know, that's that booklet I gave you that was published in 2008, which was very vague. Uh, and they're trying to, uh, I'm on a committee that's looking into rewording that thing. So, okay, uh, page eight, uh...
Page?
Page eight, and you agree, what's she saying?
To the government side.
How does this provision work with the provisions above that says all solar collection systems that are for municipal use are exempt from land use regulations? This says that collection systems are allowed on town-owned property if they comply with requirements of the ordinance, anti-bog.
Right.
So what she, uh, let's see, solar collection systems of any size shall be permitted on the following sites if they remain town-owned municipal properties and comply with requirements of this ordinance. That was in the, uh, okay, which one that was in? Well, what was your...
Well, if they're town-owned properties, I mean, you're just specifying which properties we're talking about, not the other properties that the town owns.
No, we specify comply with requirements of this ordinance. In other words, we're saying, if you put up, you put up a solar collection system on a school facility, you gotta comply with the system, with the ordinance. But we, but we don't have to comply, do we?
No, town, no, we don't have a building permit to build buildings.
No, you don't have to, but we're saying here...
And we could probably build on wetlands, Kate.
Yeah, you can. Dig a hole and drain it out.
I'm just saying.
Careful, schools sit on a lot of wetlands.
They sit around, yeah.
Yeah, they do, downhill. Okay, so what are we gonna do about it? Solar collection systems of any size or type shall be permitted on the following sites if they remain town-owned municipal properties.
Why don't we just take out the last part of the sentence? They remain town-owned properties.
Right.
Period.
Period or colon, either way.
What are we doing?
Colon.
A colon, because you're saying the following properties...
Yep.
Can, and we have eight of them at the moment. Now, if we have more or less, we can take them out. You're saying these following properties, the ones we're talking about,
Mm-hmm.
take out the requirements of the ordinance, because, as we say, the town, they're town-owned, they're different. Um, that might work, or I'm open to suggestions.
Yep, that's a good one, okay.
Thanks for your contribution, John.
Well, I'll function, function.
Page nine.
Oh, page nine.
Page nine, uh, she got a font thing there, I don't know if you know that. Uh, then she added, uh... So additional information is set forth in the general applications criteria. Okay?
Yeah, fine.
Yeah, that's, that's four.
And then you understood that application, because of conditional use only, so that there won't be any mistakes.
So where do we put that? Just leave that away, would the, would additional information set forth from the general application criteria?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, the only thing, I guess, what I would comment, John, or recommend, if we're gonna expel a conditional use permit, wherever we have that, we put the cup. If you have it one place, you have, you know how like on the front page, she had cup, and we weren't conditional?
Yeah.
So we just use those interchangeably, wherever we have the...
First reference.
Right, you just, so you have it throughout the whole place. So if you have conditional use permit, that means, so you...
Where is it, are you on page nine?
Yeah, right here. Conditional use permit, on sheet...
Oh, we wanna, we're, we're keeping it that way, right?
Yeah, we want to keep it, but maybe put in, in parentheses, cup, because on the front page, we had cup. Were we gonna take cup out?
We were gonna take cup out.
Oh, we weren't gonna reference it at all?
We weren't gonna reference.
Okay.
We're gonna spell it out, because we didn't want any confusion.
Yes, as long as we're consistent with the whole way we're doing it, okay, I'm fine with that then, sorry.
Because she didn't pick this up.
Right, yeah.
No, she didn't.
Did we pay her too much money?
Okay, page 10 is clear.
Yep.
Page 11. Uh, okay, down way at the end, the other stuff is just formatting.
Yep.
Uh, item three, erosion control measures during construction shall be detailed as required. And she says, as required by whom?
By Kate.
Yeah, we'll put by Kate.
As required by Kate...
Or maybe town and state.
Site, uh, no. As required, as required by, uh, we could, we don't call them site, we call them something else. Uh, development regulations.
Okay, perfect, as required by development.
Sorry, I was, I was going for it.
I really liked Kate myself, but...
I like Kate in there.
Let's put Brinsey two in there, yeah.
So, yeah.
By development regulations, okay.
And you know what, we're probably gonna change that name. I'm gonna suggest we change it to site regulations, site, because every other town, known demand, that's what they call them. Except, we pulled that off from Wakefield, yes, we did.
So, well, I guess we could, okay.
Well, we, at the moment, we call it development regulations. Put it in there, if we change it, we'll change this ordinance as well.
Uh, page 12, uh, way down on glare.
Included where?
Included where?
Is that in the development regulations?
I said was, eliminate included, and make it understood that anti-glare coating is required, period. So there's no question.
Then, well, an index measured glare...
Are you including where, the setting, which index?
The standard is lower than the index of water and standard anti-glare windows in most houses. Many panels are already manufactured with this coating. So where do you wanna stick that, Janet?
You wanna take included out, because included is in there.
Yep.
So some, some of those things come through whether, whether coating is already included.
So...
So we're gonna say the standard is...
I just eliminate included, and just make it understood that the anti-glare coating is required.
Okay, so we just take that out and read, an index measured glare, the standard is lower than the index water and standard anti-glare windows in most houses.
Why do you have to have that in there?
Yeah, continue on.
Because glare is a...
No, I know glare is important, it's not as important as it used to be, but why are you saying the standard is lower than the index of...
It's not a limit with the end.
I mean, what is that?
The index measured glare, that is standard, even lower than the index of water and standard anti-glare windows. You want it less than the window.
I mean, we, well, we could take out the first part of the sentence, saying many panels already, are already manufactured.
What's that?
If you said many panels are already...
Some materials come through with the coating on them.
I know that.
All right, wait a minute, John's got a...
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
John has got a recommendation, go ahead, John.
If we take out the individual standard part, and just say, in, index measured glare, many panels are already manufactured, and then you can say, the board recommends, uh, using pre, uh...
Don't recommend, you require.
Okay, required.
Right, so then we put that, the board requires the use, uh, the...
The use of the, uh...
Okay, so, an index, an index measured glare requires what? Is required.
Yeah, no, index, uh, the board requires, uh, panels with an index measured glare.
Wait a minute, the board, we don't say the board, it is required.
It is required.
It is required. Go ahead, Janet.
It is required, uh, property owners use index measured glare, period. Take out the standard is lower than index of water, that doesn't make any sense, because no one knows what that is anyway. And then you have the finishing out with the many panels are already included. So we require, and many of them are already included. So if they buy one that doesn't include it, they have to put it on.
So it's required that, uh, okay, index measured glare, it is required, period.
Period.
Okay.
It's passive, but it will accept it.
Because those, those, uh, the technology for glare is getting better and better, and, uh, the angle that they are set, at least the stationary ones, and even the pedestal ones, are such in material that glare is becoming less of an issue. Because they're, sometimes require that the glare at a 35 degree, whatever it is, can't go beyond certain...
Well, we should include that, because as you say, they're getting better and things are changing, so we'll say they're required.
So we don't need to put in many panels are already manufactured, no, that's, that's extra stuff.
I probably would take that out.
Yeah, I don't think we need that, no.
Yeah, we require index measured glare.
Now, it says index glare, it is required.
Even better.
Okay, page 13, uh, wait a minute, Janet, you gotta change your page here. Okay, page thirteen, uh, wait a minute, Janet, you gotta change your page here. Uh, page, yeah, okay, additional setbacks, I agree.
Yep.
It should be in one place.
Yeah.
Like, it already is.
Yep, so she just left it in there and highlighted it, right? Subject, yeah.
Yeah, because you've got, you've got page seven as addition of setback.
Oh, so we can strike this one?
I would say no, but that compare what page seven says to what this one says, and it's the same, get rid of it.
I agree.
Page seven, oh yeah, wow, okay, she added that. All right, so we get rid of that.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, we cross that one off, get rid of that whole thing, okay. Page thirteen, same thing, I think, right?
No, fourteen.
Fourteen.
Oh, that, that was part of it, that was part of it.
Page thirteen, fourteen.
Okay, stormwater.
Wait a minute.
Wait a minute.
Go ahead, go ahead, continue.
Okay, so new supplies, let's see here, what's she saying here? Uh, okay, uh, in her comments here, she's talking, is she talking about this whole thing? Oh, yeah, she's talking about this whole thing we just dropped, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so groundwater mountain systems that are required to secure a New Hampshire Department of Environment and Alteration of Terrain in accordance with ours, they then shall apply for such permit, receipt of an AOT permit shall be a condition, conditioned precedent to any approval issued by the planning board for such system.
I'm good with that.
Yep, I'm good with that too.
Wait a minute, is that what she said?
Yes, what she said.
That's what she's, she's recommended, so basically she's saying.
All right, because what I read, like I said, I actually have the yellow comment, because I, you know, at one point you need to, I thought you needed, the AOT wasn't, wasn't required until after the approval.
No, it says.
Not wrong.
Shall, go ahead.
AOT, what is it?
It says, uh, receipt of an AOT permit shall be a condition precedent to any approval issued by the planning board for such system. So that has, it's a condition precedent to any approval.
Okay.
Okay, uh, rest of that page is just a radical start. Okay, page fifteen, eliminate if required, and additional information shall calculate, in other words, you're striking that.
Yeah.
Or we're striking that, I don't know about her. Uh, required by whom? Additional information.
That's why it's not, you're gonna, you're gonna be, uh, if required.
Yeah, okay. Did a lot of work on this, uh, this, Kayla, very nice. Uh, okay, page sixteen, you got a couple things here.
What was Kate, she added, she added that, and I agree with it.
She added industrial commercial outdoor lighting requirements?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then now, she talks about lighting, and we already have a separate lighting ordinance, we don't need to do another one.
So just take it out, or just leave it in?
Take it out, just take it out. Why confuse things? Because you're gonna have somebody come back and say, well, it says one thing here and it says another thing there. I, we have a lighting ordinance.
Why don't we just reference C?
Yeah.
Lighting, that's better.
Does, yeah.
Well, now, wait a minute, you're, I know where you're going with this. Lighting could be different, there could be different requirements for a solar commercial.
Just wanna protect the abutters.
Yes.
We wanna keep our night sky.
It's true, but unless, if our town ordinance doesn't have those restrictions in it.
But the whole thing is security and protection, all.
Well, light, that's part of it. So minimal to access and safety requirements only. All lighting shall meet site regulations for the zoning ordinances, industrial and commercial outdoor, outdoor lighting requirements, which we have.
Okay.
And to downcast the shield from abutting properties.
That's my, that's right, and when I read that, I said, we already have that.
So I think like what John was saying, well, lighting, why don't we just refer to, shall meet, yeah, so here it is, it said, we shall, it says all lighting shall meet site regulations for the zoning ordinance, so why don't we just?
All lighting shall meet, yep.
Well, it's already in there. There's your lighting ordinance. No, but I, but I agree with you to say, well, let's not make this so.
How do we wanna work?
We've cited the existing ordinance for lighting, and if that ordinance needs to change, we need to change that ordinance, but this would be.
Yeah, so, so we wanna say on, onsite lord, uh, lighting shall, um.
Conform.
Oh, yeah.
Comply.
To article, whatever it is.
Right.
Okay, article.
So at least we've covered it, but we not come. Protect the abutters, shielded from abutting properties.
Uh.
It's not my choice, that's just.
I mean, is it our light ordinance, doesn't?
It's just irritating when you get somebody who tells his life.
I have one right now, I'm about ready to blow.